Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday morning Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilch and I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brinkman, Commissioners Deb Shore. On my right, Vice Chair, Commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us from the County Attorney's Office, Mr. David Durbin. From the County Clerk's office, we have the County Clerk, Mr. Dan Nolte, and Ms. Kelly Lundgren. From the County, Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Egan, should be joining us momentarily, as well as the Chief Deputy Administration, Chief Deputy Administrative Officer, Ann Ames. Now, if you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one, our minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, May 23, 2017.
Approve, motion to approve with the notation correction to item 3B. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, May 23, with the corrections made to item 3B. Any discussion or additional corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Department Budget Hearing is held on Tuesday, May 23, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners Department Budget Hearings held last Tuesday, May 23. Any discussion or corrections? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two, our claims, approval of all claims processed through May 30, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through May 30. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a special presentation, introduction of Karen Peterson, Lancaster County Facilities and Properties Director.
Good morning, Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Peterson.
Good morning.
Sorry. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, I'm Karen Peterson. I have been selected as the next Administrator for the Public Building Commission. I'm excited to be here today and look forward to bringing my, not only my skill set and the things that I understand, but a little bit of enthusiasm for the new position. I am a lifelong, for the most part, Lincoln resident, born and raised here, raised my family here, and excited to get to work for you.
Can you tell us a little about your background?
Sure. I have about thirty years of experience in real estate. I've worked for three different companies here in Lincoln. The current company that I work for is actually based out of California, but I manage the assets for the owner here in Lincoln, it's about a half million square feet, strictly commercial real estate. My previous jobs, I've had kind of a mixed portfolio of residential and commercial real estate. I have done everything from the leasing to the maintenance to the construction oversight, to handling the building process, to oversight of staff as well as vendor staff. So I bring a lot of experience.
Any questions from Ms. Peterson? Oh, Deb?
We'll certainly look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
It's a unique situation in that you are the Administrator for the Public Building Commission, but you answer the County Board, the City Council, the Mayor, Department Directors, thirteen other elected officials, so.
Perfect.
It's going to be a unique challenge and look forward to working with you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is number four, public hearing. County text amendment number 17008 to the Lancaster County zoning resolution to amend Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 22.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for the County Text Amendment number 17008 to Lancaster County zoning resolution.
Do you solemnly swear from that testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Tom Chaka, planning staff. This is a application to amend the county zoning text brought to you by the planning department. Basically, it's to reformat the zoning regulations by amending and adding definitions, clarifying sections, reorganizing the special permit chapter, and adding districts for each special permit throughout the chapter. Some of the definitions changed are, for example, we added a definition or changed the definition for grade so that it matches what Building and Safety uses to determine grade for heights of buildings. We changed terms such as nursing home to healthcare facilities, residential and non-residential to be more up-to-date and current with those type of uses. Another example is we changed churches to places of religious assembly to be all-inclusive. There were several definitions added on behalf of the Health Department to make it clearer on commercial composting operations. Also, probably the biggest change would have been, like I said, in the special permit chapter, went through every special permit that was listed and put what district each special permit is allowed, and then also went back in those districts, whether it would be AG, AGR, R, or B district, to make sure they match what was in the special permit chapter. Some of probably, some of the bigger changes were to, under the AG district and the conditional use section, we added a couple of conditions for farm wineries to, previously there was nothing in there about minimum amounts of wine being produced to call themselves a farm winery. We've added that to be 500 gallons on average over a three-year period. We also added, there was, found out that if you wanted to be the owner or operator of the farm winery and live on-site, you would have had to have a minimum of forty acres each use. The winery was considered a use and the residence was considered a separate use. So we've changed that so that you can live on-site and only have twenty acres. So you wouldn't need forty. Another section we changed was under the home occupation to clarify what a worker would be as part of that home occupation. Under the, well, yeah, under both home occupation and expanded home occupation. Under community unit plan in Article 14, currently, when you do a community unit plan under the agriculture zoning district, you have to always request waivers to things like lot area, lot width, frontage setbacks. The intent of the CUP is to create smaller lots and cluster them. So to avoid them always having to list those waivers repeatedly, we made a change that they would automatically get to use the setbacks and lot area, hyphen area regulations of Those are probably the biggest changes. Like I said, most of the other changes had to do with reformatting and adding which district the special permits are in. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Chaka?
Tom, you and I have had an exchange by email about some suggestions, a suggested amendment I want to introduce during the voting session. I just want to clarify that planning doesn't have any opposition and understands they're just spelling corrections and punctuation, and then a couple references where we go gender neutral as opposed to.
Yeah, we, planning has no problems with the amendment. Ms. Brinkman did due diligence and went through the whole zoning code. I just wanted to just state that a lot of the grammatical errors in there are from things that have probably been repeated over the years and years. We didn't actually go through, planning staff, myself, go through and read every line and every sentence of the code. But we thank you for doing that. We can get these corrections made now.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, thank you. Anyone else here to testify in support of the text amendment? Anyone here to testify in opposition? Or in a neutral capacity? Hearing none, I will close this public hearing for County Text Amendment number 17008.
Next is number five, unfinished business. Special designated license application from Kramer Bar and Grill for an event to be held on July 8, 2017 at Kramer Bar and Grill at 11365 West Kramer Street, Kramer, Nebraska.
Is the applicant here present? Okay, I did speak with the applicant last week after our last board meeting. We did discuss several of the issues regarding the application. He did tell me that he would be here today. So I don't know what the County Board wishes to do, if you'd like to hold it or to proceed. Okay, we'll go ahead and hold it again until next week. Mr. Clerk, please continue on to the next attended item.
Next is number six, new business. Six A is setting the annual salary for Karen Peterson, Lancaster County Facilities and Properties Director, eighty thousand dollars effective June 19, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set the annual salary for Karen Peterson, Lancaster County Facilities Properties Director. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a resolution regarding County Text Amendment number 17008, amending Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 22 as provided in attachment A.
I think this is the right time for me to make a motion to ask for approval of the amendment that I distributed by email and provided to the clerk's office, again, that I referenced before, that is just some clarifying language and punctuation and spelling corrections. So I would so move adoption of the amendment to the proposed text amendment.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the resolution based off of the information drafted by Commissioner Brinkman. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
And then I'd make a motion to approve the County Text Amendment as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the County Text Amendment number 17008 as amended. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five C, or excuse me, six C is a special designated license application from Myers Wine and Business as Myers Cork and Bottle for an event to be held on June 17, 2017 at Prairie Creek Inn, 2400 South 148th Street, Walton, Nebraska.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the SDL application from Myers Cork and Bottle for an event on June 17. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is an amusement license application from Spencer Munson to hold Nebraska Folk and Roots Festival on June 16 and 17, 2017 at Branch Oak Farm at 17015 Northwest 70th Street, Raymond, Nebraska.
Good morning.
Morning.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Spencer Munson, I'm one of the organizers of the Nebraska Folk and Roots Festival.
Could you tell us a little about the event?
Yes, sir. This is our fourth annual Nebraska Folk and Roots Festival. It's a two-day event held at the Branch Oak Farm just north of town, close to Raymond. We have about, anywhere from 750 to 1200 attendees. They come out, enjoy music, local food, and drink provided by Kincaid Brewing. We have bands from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Friday night, and then from 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM all day Saturday. It's a family-friendly event. People come out and park, they can camp overnight. We have workshops, tents, vendors. People enjoy the music and the scenery.
Excellent. Any questions for Mr. Munson, Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, what kind of workshops?
String workshops, mostly so you can learn banjo, guitar, upright bass, and mandolin.
Oh, that's really interesting. Yeah, cool.
Any other questions for Mr. Munson? Okay. I also see that the county engineer and county attorney, I'm sorry, the county engineer and county sheriff are here. I don't know if anybody has any questions for them regarding this application.
I've had conversations with the county sheriff in regards to any issues that he had, or any red flags that he had. We've also been in touch with the Raymond Fire Department, and they are aware of the event, and just warned us not to have any parking on the highway, county highway.
Yep, that's standard operating procedure.
Yep.
I guess, Mr. Durbin, from the County Attorney's Office?
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. I'm not sure whether the clerk's office has received the insurance yet, so I would, if we haven't, I would just ask that we approve contingent on receiving the insurance requirements.
Of course, we've, are waiting for that paperwork from the insurance company. We've filled everything out, we should get it today.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything, Commissioner Amundson?
I did see the suggestion here from Steve Hendrickson regarding the address.
Okay.
Okay, what it was, I note that in case of emergency, in case of emergency, the emergency access should have the correct address for the actual concert, not the owner's address, not the owner's residence.
Okay, it's.
Have you made that correction?
We can, I believe it's the same.
Well, the owner's, the owner's address is 17015 Northwest 70th, and the concert is at 17303 Northwest 70th.
Okay.
It's just a minor thing, but I mean, it is, there are numbers that are different.
Sure, we'll make sure that we get that changed.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Munson? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve contingent on receipt of the insurance certification.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the amusement license application from Spencer Munson to hold the Nebraska Folk and Roots Festival, contingent upon receipt of the insurance certificate. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a special designated license application from Hub Cafe for the Nebraska Folk and Roots Festival to be held on June 16 and 17, 2017 at Branch Oak Farm, 17015 Northwest 70th Street, Raymond, Nebraska.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the SDL application from Hub Cafe for the Nebraska Folk and Roots Festival. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Good luck.
Six F is an amendment to County Contract C-17-263 with Great Plains Appraisal Company to revise the insurance requirements for individual referees hired to conduct Board of Equalization hearings.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Tom Cooper with Great Plains Appraisal, coming before you today for an amendment to the referee contract, which isn't part of the coordinator contract, mainly to modify the insurance requirement to fall more in line with where we have traditionally been, is the coordinator's responsibility to verify the presence of automobile insurance. The limits that were in the original contract exceeded what was required by law and exceeded what most of our referees carry, and therefore, we were having trouble recruiting referees. I will point out that during the referee process, we do do in some inspections, although most of those inspections have taken place during the informal process earlier in the year, or later in the year during the Turk appeal process. And so based on the volume that we'll see this year, we don't anticipate a lot of inspections, but for those that do, we did want to verify that they had car insurance.
Okay. We, any questions for Mr. Cooper?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend County Contract with Great Plains Appraisal Company, revising the insurance requirements for individual referees hired to conduct the Board of Equalization hearings. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is a resolution in matter of extending the deadline for hearing protests regarding real property in Lancaster County from July 25, 2017 to August 10, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to extend the deadline for hearing protests regarding real property in Lancaster County from August, I'm sorry, from July 25 to August 10, 2017. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is adoption of the 2017 Lancaster County Board of Equalization Policies and Procedures for Property Evaluation Protest.
Sorry, I could have just stayed, Tom Cooper with Great Plains Appraisal. This is just a minor updating each year to the process. Based on the limited time that we'll have during the, during the appeal process, we have modified the policies and procedures to be clear about inspections, that they may not take place during this stage of the process. And also, we've been clear in there this year about that if there are questions regarding the data and process utilized by the assessor's office, that they should be contacted.
Move appro, move.
Go ahead.
I move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the 2017 Lancaster County Board of Equalization Policies and Procedures. Commissioner Brinkman has a question.
It's my first time through this process, so in reading the, I guess what we're calling the policies and procedures, you talk about in general how many minutes you use for each property, and it mentioned residential and apartments and ag, but not commercial. Are we not dealing with commercial, or do we not set time limits in that area?
It is so varied, that those are very general guidelines for scheduling purposes. We work directly with the County Clerk's Office for scheduling commercial based on the complexity of each case. The referees do have the discretion to exceed those limits that you just noted, based on what comes up during the hearing, but for scheduling purposes, that's generally how they're scheduled.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. I is a space rental agreement between Lancaster Event Center and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Clerk for meeting space in conjunction with referee hearings from June 27 to July 24, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the space rental agreement with the Lancaster County Event Center for the meeting space in conjunction with referee hearing process. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six J is a resolution regarding transfer appropriations from the General Fund Miscellaneous Budget to the General Fund District Court Budget.
Good morning, Mr. Myers.
Good morning. Dennis Meyer, Lancaster County Budget and Fiscal Officer. Resolution this morning is transferring additional appropriations over to the District Court Budget. The total amount that is, is needed is $343,000. The majority of that is due to the attorney fees that, that have kind of caused us some issues as far as needed payments for this current fiscal year. So far, you know, of our $2 million contingency that we have set aside, we have utilized $214,000 of that, and that was back, I think it was within the last month or six weeks where we transferred for the county court, which again, was based a lot of, off of attorney fees. So this is kind of the same situation. This will clean up our district court. I will then be back probably within the next couple of weeks, and we'll clean up any other remaining amounts that we have out there.
Any questions, Commissioner Shore?
Do you foresee any other large amounts coming up?
I, I do not. The ones that we'll do in the next couple of weeks will kind of just clean up items, and really, the reason for the county court earlier and the district court now is just the timing and the size amount with the remaining budget that's left.
And I would just point out that on Thursday, during our regularly scheduled staff meeting, we did have a lengthy discussion with the District Court Administrator about these costs, and it will continue to have those conversations, not only with the district clerk, the district court, also with the county court, as well as a public defender, because these are all involved with the indigent defense, which is, are those attorney fees that the county pays for, for defendants in those different courts. And so as we continue, we'll continue to have those discussions with those individuals regarding the attorney fees. Commissioner Avery?
I think we should mention, for the public's benefit, that this is something over which we have no real control, and the court has no real control. Unless you just decide, no, we're not going to help these indigent.
Right, correct. I mean, it's all based off a number of cases, number of individuals, all of that, yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Meyer? Okay, otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a resolution, sorry, a motion and a second to approve a resolution transferring the appropriations from the General Fund Miscellaneous Budget to the General Fund for District Court Budget. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilch.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is an interlocal agreement with the Nebraska Administrative Office of Probation and Administration for the operation of the Lancaster County Juvenile Drug Court. Term of agreement is July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2019.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter, or to approve the interlocal agreement. with the Nebraska Administrative Office of Probation and Administration for the operation of Lancaster County Juvenile Drug Court. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is an agreement between H Gale Williams and L and S Williams in Lancaster County with respect to developing road frontage at property generally located north of Kickingbird Subdivision in Lancaster County.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Williams for the development of a frontage road at a property located north of Kickingbird Subdivision. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six M is the acceptance of the following documents from H Gale Williams and L and S Williams conveying interest in real property generally located north of Kickingbird Subdivision in Lancaster County, and this is warranted for public right-of-way and permanent drainage easement.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept documents from the Williams conveying interest in real property located north of the Kickingbird Subdivision. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is an amendment to county contract C dash thirteen dash two thirty-two with Keefe Commissary Network LLC, an affiliate of the Keefe Group for inmate commissary service at Lancaster County Corrections. The amendment renews the agreement for a four-year term from June fifth, two thousand seventeen, through June fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Good morning, Ken Prey, jail administrator, corrections, and I brought along our business manager, Angie Coljol, in case you have any questions. I wanted to give you a brief, just summary of what we're doing with this contract. The first is, we had five living units that don't have kiosks in them yet, so we're going to add five kiosks, so we can go paperless, which will help with staff having to collect them and manual entry, things like that. Second thing, Keefe's agreed to add nine vending machines to our ground floor area and thirteen microwaves. This is our dormitory area. We have our minimum security inmates on the ground floor. It's not direct supervision, so initially, we didn't put microwaves in the dorms, things like that, and it's been working well down there. So, our, one of our big goals is, since it's minimum security, is we, it would provide an incentive with the vending machines and the microwaves for the inmates to want to be housed down there, which would free up area in the pods upstairs. But then also, to get down there, you can, you could drop from, say, a medium custody to a minimum custody by attending programs and staying discipline-free. So, we think it would be a nice incentive to get down to the ground floor to have those kinds of things. It should also potentially increase our revenues also with the vending machines down there. The third thing is, we're going to add, it's a secure packer, it's also called the Friends and Family Program, which basically means, just as an example, if you lived in another state and you had a family member, a loved one in jail here, their birthday's coming up, something like that, you, we would have a limited list of things and a money limit, which we would have not set up yet with them, but would have set up, and then you could order actual items for your loved one, and it would be shipped to them, you know, instead of just putting money on their account. Because we added that, Friends and Family, then Keefe is going to increase our commission rates to twenty-six percent from twenty-three, so we would go up three percent. So that's kind of a summary of what we're working on right now.
Mr. Prey, is there an actual increase in the contract as far as the daily rate, or for the daily meal rate? I mean, this is not the, there's no rate increase.
No, no, we just get the revenues, the commissions off of sales, and that would go up three percent higher. And I talked with Angie, and our estimate this year would be, we're going to have about ninety-one thousand dollars in revenues, so three percent more would be about twenty-seven hundred dollars more per year. And then, like I said, we're hoping that having the vending machines and things like that is going to actually increase sales, but that's, we'll have to wait to see how that goes.
Commissioner Shore?
And just for clarification, the income and the revenues from that commission does not go into the county's general fund budget, but is used only for inmate programming?
Yeah, it goes into what's called the inmate benefit fund, excuse me, inmate benefit fund, and we use that for programs and other items to benefit the inmates. And of course, our goal is to improve them for when they get out to become more productive members of the community and help them work through some of their problems.
Any other questions for Mr. Prey? Commissioner Amundson?
I think it's just a really nice way to increase the incentives and so forth, and that's one of the things I, it's good for the inmates.
Okay, any other questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Keefe Commissary Network. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Six O is an agreement with Milliman, Inc., for an actuarial review of the county's workers' compensation and general liability programs, cost of county is seven thousand five hundred dollars, term of the agreement is February first, two thousand seventeen, through January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Milliman, Inc., for the actuarial review of the county's workers' compensation and general liability programs. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is an agreement with Innovative Pain and Spine Specialists, provides specialized medical care and assistance to Lancaster County General Assistance Clients who have pending claims with the Social Security Administration and may be eligible for retroactive Medicaid benefits.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This is a contract for Dr. Zach's office. He specializes in pain management. We have a lot of clients who have chronic pain. This is the first specialist that we have a contract with who can help our clients deal with pain and overcome that, so we're excited with this contract.
Any questions for Ms. Wall?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Innovative Pain and Spine Specialists. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is amendment to county contract C dash fifteen dash five eighty-seven with Genoa to provide pharmacy services for a pilot program for general assistance clients at Health three sixty Integrated Care. The amendment extends the contract through December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
And this is an amendment to an existing contract that we have with Genoa. Genoa, we had a pilot with Genoa when we did the pilot with Health three sixty, so this is just to fulfill the obligation we have with the pilot.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Genoa to provide pharmacy services for a pilot program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is approval of the Lincoln Lancaster County Human Services Grant Guidelines.
And these guidelines were drafted, there were many questions as to how the application process worked. We have several different pots of funding that different nonprofit agencies can apply for. They consist of our Joint Budget Committee funding, keynote funding, and then an array of juvenile services funding to include our juvenile justice prevention funds, community aid enhancement, community-based aid. We have Office of Violence Prevention Funds, and then State Juvenile Services Funds. So these guidelines set forth how agencies would go about applying for funds, when the RFPs are released to the community, how the selection process is determined, and what criteria we use when making a selection of grants that are funded.
Any questions for Ms. Wall regarding the grant guidelines? Commissioner Shore?
And this information will be available on your website.
Yes.
Commissioner Amundson?
I think that this is really a good thing to do, too, just to clarify up the questions, because we're sitting in on some of those things, it can be very confusing.
Move approval.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Human Services Grant Guidelines. Commissioner Avery has a question.
I'm just curious, do you have no guidelines now?
No, we don't.
Oh, boy.
But we do now.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. S is a recommendation from the purchasing agent and county engineer to award a purchase order to Midwest Services and Sales for carbide grater blades. The total amount is thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty dollars, which includes an increase in quantity from sixty-six each to seventy-five.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, the use of carbide blades is a change to county engineering. We've traditionally used carbonized steel. Carbonized steel doesn't last as long as the carbide blades, and has a tendency to kind of cup out in the middle of the blade. We actually mount two of these to each grater blade, and it's kind of like a blade at the bottom of the blade, and if you wanted to come over to our shop and see them, that's, that would be good. We know that these carbonized blades last longer, so that means our people have to lift that hundred-pound blade and hook it up to the bottom of that machine a lot less. And then, we also know that we get a better cut on the roads with these, and so, we're really excited about the switch to the, to the, to this type of blade.
Any questions for Ms. Dingman? Oh, Commissioner Shore?
Okay, now, you said they last longer, but we're going to buy more, because we're getting a discount by buying more.
We're actually, if you look at what we have bought in the past, we're buying less. And so, typically, in the past, what we needed for an annual supply of blades was about seventy-five thousand dollars. So, and we would change those blades. For example, when it was snowing and we were having to be on the rougher surfaces, we would have to send a laborer out with a truck full of these blades, and then the motorator would stop at the side of the road, and we'd change these blades because they would wear so quickly. So, although we're getting a few more, they last a lot longer. We have twenty-three motor graders on the road on any given day, so this was just a better, a better number for overall what we needed to do.
Any other questions for Ms. Dingman?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award a purchase order to Midwest Services and Sales for carbide grater blades. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. T is a contract with Miller Seed Company to provide the annual supply of grass seed. Term of the contract is one year from the date of execution. The cost to county is not to exceed nine thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Miller Seed Company to provide the annual supply of grass seed. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six U is a contract with Kohl's Pharmacy and Home Care to provide the annual supply and administration of influenza vaccine. The term of the contract is one year from the date of execution. The cost to county is not to exceed nine thousand four hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Kohl's Pharmacy and Home Care to provide the annual supply of, supply and administration of influenza vaccine. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. V is a contract with Midwest Sound and Lighting to provide a Hall of Justice courtroom audio replacement. The cost to county is not to exceed one hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. Work for Phase One is to be completed honorably before July thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and work for Phase Two is to be completed honorably before December first, two thousand seventeen.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Midwest Sound and Lighting to provide Hall of Justice courtroom audio replacement. I do have a question for the purchasing agent, if he'd please come up.
Good morning, Mr. Wall.
Good morning, Bob Wall, the purchasing agent.
We approved a contract similar to this at a previous board meeting.
You approved the recommendation for this contract two weeks ago. This is the actual execution of it.
Thank you for clarifying that.
This is the Jared Gavin project.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wall. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Six W is an amendment to county contract C dash ten dash five ninety with Bob Barker Company, Inc., for the annual supply of corrections, staff clothing, inmate clothing, and accessories. The amendment extends the contract from June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, through August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed ten thousand eight hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Bob Barker Company for the annual supply of correction staff clothing, inmate clothing and accessories. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. X is an amendment to kind of contract C-12-249 with Boss Electric Company doing business as Boss Lighting using the state of Nebraska contract number 13270OC for light bulbs and ballast. The amendment extends the contract from May 1st, 2017 through June, through July 31st, 2017. The estimated cost of county is not to exceed $500.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Boss Electric Company for light bulbs and ballast. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore.
Yes.
Avery.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Y is an amendment to kind of contract C-13-316 with Pepsi-Cola of Lincoln for vending services for Lancaster County and the Public Building Commission. The amendment renews the contract from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Pepsi-Cola for vending services. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery.
Yes.
Brinkman.
Yes.
Shore.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Wilchun.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.